So, we'll do this. We live? Alright, so I'll call the meeting to order. Today is an agenda work session dealing with elections. Today's Thursday, February 6th. Pursuant to ARS 38431.02H, the public will have physical access to the meeting room in Bisbee prior to the start of the meeting and also online and by phone. Any, any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors will attend either in person or by telephone, or via video or internet. Members of the public may also attend via internet. Work sessions are timed for the county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors and public comments will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call, District 1.
Crosby is here.
District 2.
Gomez is here.
And District 3, Antonori is here. All supervisors are present and in person. And we will go around the table, introduce staff for everybody on the radio.
Joe Casey, interim deputy county administrator.
Marisol Ranteria, interim elections director.
Dylan Hendel, deputy county attorney with the Civil Division.
Sherry Goman, interim county administrator.
Alright, we have a lot of interns. We have, we'll have to start working on that problem, problem soon. Okay, so we'll start out with Mr. Casey's gonna give us an explanation of agenda item number one.
Yeah, so today just want to sit down and talk about, you know, what got us to this point and what we're doing to make corrections from what we noticed over the last election moving forward. So I have a list of various things we'll go through. You know, and just kind of some of the talking points that were on the directed report that was presented to the board for the general election. And then, you know, like I said, going over actions that we're taking and future actions that we would like to take to, to improve elections for the county. Want me to get going or you want to start with any questions or? I guess we can get going.
Yeah.
Okay, so the first challenge that we, we dealt with in the election, for the general election, was errors on the ballots. Some of you are very familiar with that. So, we had, we had several errors that, that occurred. One, what we're gonna do to, to help correct that is enhance the process for, for doing the review of those ballots. And we had a very condensed timeline for that general election where we only had three days to go through 700 plus pages of ballots. And a couple errors occurred that slipped through because of that. We're gonna make sure that at least five working days is set aside to reviewing the ballots. E- even if the vendors that we work with say, no, we need these by this date, we'll have pushback saying, no, we need to have our, our review, view time.
Right there, we need the vendors that do this, right? Do you have vendors that you can, can bid out to or is it one vendor that you just have to use or how does that work?
There are multiple vendors that can be used. Right now, the two primary vendors we use is Runbeck for printing services, for printing out the ballots, and then ESNS for the machines and the equipment itself.
So the ballot stuff though is county recorder, right? That's his game?
No, so we, we-
That's yours?
Yes, we, we-
Oh, okay. I think Stevens is-
Okay, he mails them. He mails them.
But he did something with the ballots. I just saw on the paper, they just did-
That was, that was his-
Paper?
That was a paper.
That was a grant.
Courtesy, courtesy type paper.
Yeah, he, he had a, he got a grant for some special security paper.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
He did a test.
Okay. But he doesn't do the printing of the ballots?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
So the five days before, where is the, okay, so you have to have a deadline for them to be approved, right? And that's, how many days before you have to send them out, five now?
So, in, in this particular case, for the general election, ESNS was a little behind and didn't get us the ballot proofs on time. So that pushed our time limit. And then from there, we had a quick turnaround to do the proofing before it went to Runbeck for printing.
Right, and how many eyes did you have to prove?
Um, we had all of the election staff.
Perfect. So, remember the idea that I gave to you when I found out, of course, the one who didn't have the ballot, my race was not on the one precinct I knew was definitely gonna vote for 100%, right? And then it's interesting because I see you have 117 active voters and 18 inactive. Where when you look at the precinct numbers, it was like 180. So I, I don't know why there was such a discrepancy, but even, let's say that. Is, my idea was to allow the candidates to come in to proof because it's in our interest as candidates, make sure our name is on the ballot, right? You, you see any problem with doing that?
No, so that's one of the things that we, we added on, on the review list, was to put the, the deck, the full deck up in the, the conference room for elections, available for candidates to come in and review it.
Okay.
And, and give them that, that five day working period as well. You know, they don't have to, but it'll be available if they want to come in and review.
I hate that screen. If they don't want, that's on them, you know?
So when we send out the email to the candidates so that they could check the spelling of their name, we'll let them know at that time that a full deck is available for.
Perfect, okay.
So do you, do you have digital images of those ballots?
Yes.
Before you send them off to Raybeck?
Runbeck.
Runbeck?
Yes.
Alright, so, can you just email those digital images to the candidates or is there an issue with that?
It might be, the files might be too big. So-
Really?
For an example, for the primary election, it was a thousand some pages. And for the general, it was 750.
Oh, okay.
So there's size limitations for people's mailboxes.
Yeah, 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 okay. What, what is the file format that it uses?
Uh, PDF.
So we'll take a look and see if that can be emailed and if there's any-
PDF is not a very data chewing up file format.
If it's an image, it is, it can, it could take up quite a bit of space. If it's text, then it's not quite as bad, but we'll, we'll take a look and see.
Yeah, I was, I was just saying, so if you broke it up, I don't want to make more work for you. I don't want to make more work for you. But I mean, if there's a, a place on, and, and maybe it's good for the public to, to look at it. If a place we could post it and then you want to go precinct by precinct by precinct by precinct, you could look at it.
Or you could do, well, then you have different races that have different precincts, right? I mean, like, for me, I'm not able to be duplicated and print security.
Right.
These I need to look at to see if there's any reason why we couldn't release it out there.
But that's, we, releasing it out there sounds a little dramatic.
Oh, is it, is it?
We do post sample ballots once we get it from the vendor, but that's usually after the timeline. That's one of the things they print last.
But, but the security features are in there in them files?
That's what- We would have to add watermarks to them be-
But the watermark's on the paper. I'm talking about the PDF file.
Right, they do not come with any watermarks or anything like-
There's no security me, features on the file?
No, the, the thought.
But I mean, there's nothing on the printed image that's gonna be security related.
People could-
Could duplicate.
Duplicate it, like, or, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm, without thinking this through, this is off the top of my head, you have UACABO ballots that are emailed back to us, you know, and, and verified, signature verified? If we're sending out a PDF file of a ballot without any kind of draft stamp or something, that would be a problem.
Sample ballot and the printed-
So the sample ballot is printed completely different. It is, it has the address where it was saying, registered voters at this address. And it has different verbiage on it. It doesn't resemble a ballot.
Okay.
Different security marks on the outside of the pages and things like that, so.
So.
Alright, so maybe then we do just limit it to in-person inspection and-
Yeah, in no way, I mean, maybe you have more control, I guess, over, over everything, but at least it's an opportunity for them to come and see it.
Yes.
Additionally, we're expanding that the internal county team, you know, outside the elections department, generally we did that, but for this one it's condensed, so that, that piece got stepped, skipped. But other folks such as the board, having review, library district has helped in the past, and folks with an IT has helped in the past. So more eyes on those ballots to, to spread that out over that, that period of time.
And, and I don't know if this is the right venue, right time to, but you know, so, it, let's use my, the, the race that I had that, you know, so it was off the ballot. You guys found out like Wednesday or Tuesday and then I called you Thursday when I found out, right, or did you find out Wednesday?
Actually, the timeline from when, and I do have that here.
October 22nd.
It was October 22nd when I was notified.
Uh, Tuesday?
I'll pull it up.
So we were notified, we were having poll worker training that, that day. I was notified that I needed to call a recorder. So at about 9:00 AM, I, I called Heather from the recorder's office and she let me know of the issue. I immediately got in contact with our vendor, ESNS. They confirmed the mapping error. They got a new ballot for us, for that precinct only by 9:26. I contacted Runbeck, our printing vendor, and got approved from them at 10:01. They emailed me a new ballot by 11:41 AM. They shipped us the paper ballots on 3P, at 3:00 PM that same day.
And that was Tuesday.
That was Tuesday. So, okay, I found out Thursday morning through a tip, right? And so my next thing she would ask is, I think we should have procedurally, if something like this happens, hopefully wouldn't, that the candidates affected by it would be notified also because there's things that they could do. You know, like whether it's just, hey, let's make a phone tree and let everyone know they've got to come into, because what happened, so when you sent it out was on that Thursday, the 28th? Or when did you send the ballots out?
The ballots cut out. They, they arrived in our office on October 23rd at 10:30.
That's Wednesday.
And, and the new ballots were mailed out that same day. So it was on a Wednesday. So, and then they had to have had it returned by the following Tuesday because that was the deadline for the mail-in ballots to be turned in, correct? Or to be put in the post office for a, a postmark check that, that was the date that you had to have your ballots sent in, right? So, this precinct is very unique because it's east of Douglas to the New Mexico border and from Mexico to Portal. And most of those people, like Sam McDonald's on 20,000 Acres, he doesn't come in to get his mail maybe once every two weeks. And that's kind of the norm for that area. So there'd be no way they even knew about it. So then, so then you guys sent out the second ballot. And this is the thing I think that we should think about procedurally is if that is another ballot to be sent out that says on the front, this is not, this is not a duplicate ballot. Please open, or emergency, or something in red. Because a lot of people thought it was, because I've received duplicate ballots before. I only received duplicate ballots when I was living in Kansas City. You know, I'm working there temporarily. So if there had been something on the second ballot that could identify that as, hey, it's not a duplicate, please open, maybe that's those words. Because then they could vote for me on that second ballot if you guys received it, or the first ballot without my name on there that you guys would process. But then I had, I guess Bruce Andre's made a complaint that his ballot was canceled even though the first one is what he sent out, because he was in Minnesota. So he couldn't do the second ballot, but he found out that his first ballot was canceled. So, do you know how that would have happened? Because I know he did send you guys a-
No, he'd have to talk to the recorder's office and that one.
That would be then, the recorder's office, okay. But I think it'd be really important if this was to happen again, that that second ballot going out definitely has something right on the front that says, this is not a duplicate. So- The notice went inside. Yeah, and that, people, I, I had people say, I threw it away, I thought it was a duplicate. So, and, and, and when we look at, you know, rural areas, that is something that's problematic for people when they're living in an area of rural. They're only coming into town to the post box every, once, every two weeks when they get groceries. So I think that would be something that definitely, so not only having the candidates have a, be able to look at it, but if that happens, having a second ballot definitely being visually known, not as-
So on the voter list that I get from Stevens, when I pay the $128 government shakedown fee to get access to public information.
Need to run it.
Yeah, I know. So I, I give him the 128 bucks, I get this Excel spreadsheet. A lot of those voters have phone numbers and emails in there. Is there an effort to reach them other than by mail to where we may call them and say, hey, you got a, we have a glitch?
Yeah, um, we did talk about that during this election. We did post social media notices about it. And I believe the newspaper, I know that-
Did the recorder's office call?
I think the political parties made-
We're talking about how many voters?
We're talking, they, down here it says 118, but, um, my list that I got was 180. And only 68 were able to vote or got, and, and I saw a lot of them in line the day of because I had called them other-
So they, there's snafu, go vote.
Yeah, yeah, go vote in the poll because they couldn't vote by then, you know, I mean, they didn't have the right ballot to do provincial. So, that was, you know, and, and I mean, I still won it, but at the same time, you know-
If it was close.
It was close. If the race had been close, that could have been something, then, then I would have said, hey, there's like, you know, what if it had been within 20 votes? Then I, the whole, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna say, hey, you guys, you know, you, this is, this is, I'm gonna challenge this. And so that would have really messed things up for a while, so.
So the elections department did not do the phone tree like you're asking about?
Yeah, but, but emails too, they got emails, right?
Correct.
A lot of them are correct and a lot of them don't have good internet service out there.
Much better than nothing.
Yeah, it was.
I, I've sent out text messages, I've paid money, I, I got a guy that blasted out text messages to-
So it's my understanding-
Forty thousand voters.
I don't want to, in, uh, speak for the recorder's office, but I thought the recorder's-
It cost eight cents.
Recorder's office did make those phone calls, is that right? I, I know that the elections department started calling down the list, but- But you guys, that was, it'd be pretty, with counting and any, problem you had with machines, I can't imagine that you guys had a lot of time. But I think the other thing, the third thing is, the minute you, you found out, definitely should have called the candidate so that they could have started that. Because by the time I found out, today's had passed. So, and I didn't, and so let me give you another instance. If you're not in favor with whatever political party that you're, you're, you know, with, whether it be Democrat, Republican, and say they don't like you, they're not necessarily going to be responsive. I found out that-
If, if, if the district is, yeah. If, if it's a heavy R district, the Democrats aren't gonna call a heavy R district and say, hey, make sure you guys vote.
Yeah, exactly, so you know. And if you're independent, look at the growing independent, right? People are independent. So, they have every right to, to know about what's happening. I mean, whether we like it or not, that's the way it is. So, um, I think that that's why the candidate has to be notified and not the political parties or those who don't even belong to a political party, right? They should go, right, call the candidate as soon as you find out, say, hey, so sorry, but you're not on the ballot. So then they at least can have a reaction time at the same time and get it out.
And again, like I said, I did text messages as part of my campaign, eight cents a piece to do text messages. I mean, if you got cell phone numbers, you don't have to call them, just text them and say, alert, voter error, ballot alert or something or whatever and say, fix, you know?
And just looking back, I would have reached out and, and got additional support outside the elections department to, to do that now, lesson learned.
Right.
Yes, at that time, the elections department was, was scrambling to get the election going and everything, and so on and so forth.
Like thrown in there without really-
Right, she's troubling like five footballs. At one time, Mr. Crosby.
You know, another, another factor was that Mr. Carwatsky was on the ballot.
Yeah.
He might have felt like, I don't want to hear it or something like that, I don't know, what's your impression?
And so it's-
So we, we did, we did step back from, you know, Mr. Carwatsky because he was on the ballot, so we, we put a, you know, firewall in place for, lack of a better term. So that election stuff, there was no view of, of him tampering or anything like that, so.
That's true, correct?
Correct. Now, I think that we will gladly pledge to give you the personnel resources you need to make sure that you have what you need, whether it's long-term or short-term. If you need, if you need instantaneous people, we'll make sure you have instantaneous people. And that'll be a, a benefit of not having a, a county administrator. One of them in. Okay. But, so the other thing that we do is we do send to the party chairs the, the receiving, or the full deck as well. So the party chairs do receive that and we've done that in the past and we'll continue to do that moving forward. I think that covers all those. Anything else on the errors, that discussion?
So, so do those things get, do you have to like vote on those three different procedural things that I, I discussed or is that just something you'll put into how you do things in terms?
Something we'll, we'll add into our, our duty list, our processes, yeah.
Your processes.
Mr. Crosby, on page two. I'm sure everybody has, yes, I have a lot of it with my multicolored, so. I got the top, the top says, testing was successful in the paragraph, the at the very top of page, page two. Last sentence.
Yeah.
Top of the page. But it also says, across that scene, full failure, now, now we're in a paragraph after, Roman numeral I, I, full failure which allowed the technician to pinpoint the failure, predecessor to get it replaced, successfully passed a secretary of state LNA test, but it wasn't successful. Nothing to tell on a test is like-
And, and the one thing I'd like to bring up is when I went there and I saw them doing it, I asked Lisa Marra by tongue in cheek, oh, you're going to be, they were doing testing, right? I guess, random testing of the ballot to make sure that the state and federal races had not been impacted by this error. But she's, oh, we don't care about the county races.
Yeah, because she's working for contest, so you could care less.
But, but I said, wait, I, I was kind of astounded by that because I thought they were there to actually make sure that my race was on all ballots. And even though it was one we found out there wasn't, but I found it a very strange comment to make when she said, oh, well then, you know, no, we don't care about county races. And I said, oh, only until we don't do something like, and then you indict us, because I was, I was upset. But I found that strange because they do not check to make sure county and city elections are on the ballot, right? So for an LNA test, what they're coming to see is that the machines aren't working appropriately. So with the test decks that they bring, it is just the state candidates and federal candidates. They don't have the county candidates on there.
Or they say that in their order.
Right, none of that. So that would, that's up, why we're responsible as a board of supervisors to make sure that all that, am I correct?
Oh, it sounds like it.
All that is, is? Yes, so in addition to the state LNA, we have a local LNA as well. That's conducted, you know, close to each other. And, so anybody that is on those ballots, county or city or any jurisdictions, they're welcome to come to that one and test it and see. But it was only the two political parties that were allowed in, right? I mean, I watched from the observation, but they're the ones that actually see it. They're the ones that sign off on it, so-
It's open to the public.
It is open to the public, absolutely.
And, I, is, like, does everybody get notified of, obviously, it is a public notice.
Well, how's that public news put out there, though? Is it through Facebook, is it through some email or? It's, it's posted with our- Here on the county website.
That's a requirement.
So, and on what? We have public and legal notices area. And if you do want to think about just adding it on Facebook, because sometimes, I mean, I think that's just a good step.
We do.
And, and actually, it's in the newspaper as well. And then, as you know, when I was there, two guys came who were recording as the service of CARO was. And actually, I mean, if you watch any TikTok stuff, you know, that's a big thing, you go into public lobby and people say, oh, you can't, you can't do it. But yes, they indeed can. So from now on, we have to realize that. And there was, then they put a lot of, you know, kind of, and I can understand where they're coming from, you know, it seemed like the freedom of information, speech was definitely, you know, there was Roblox and everyone was telling you can, and then it became very contentious and-
Really? We had a First Amendment auditor here?
Yeah, yeah, I was watching on that.
Was, was, was leaving?
Oh, is it on YouTube?
He was there, but he wasn't one of the, the First Amendment, yeah, it's on YouTube.
Yeah, it's on YouTube.
I gotta go see that one.
So the, the, the team has been, been trained up on that. There was a sign, they were going off of the sign that had been posted for years on the front saying, no photography.
Right.
And so they were, they were trying to enforce the signage that, that had been brought up there.
The guy from Cerro Vista Herald shouldn't have been there either then. He should have been somebody else who, who was told he couldn't because he still is doing the same thing these guys were, right? So we definitely, I'm glad to hear that you guys, you train, you know, that anybody can come in there and film it because it's public, it's taxpayers' money that came for it, so.
And then I want to come back to, to Mr. Crosby's question on the tabulation machine. So, yeah, the LNA, when that was conducted, the machines were working just fine. It's just like with the car, it can be working fine, two days later it breaks down. So it was the same, same thing as-
You run, you run, run a, a sample test ballot through and then you validate the software against the test ballot, right? That's what that test is?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a predetermined test deck.
Yeah, it's a, it's a built-in test, a bit test as we call it, yeah.
Yep, so, so yeah, that's what the LNA does, is making sure the software is in fact lining up with the ballot or that, that the ballots are being processed properly as the software supposedly.
You're not off one little black square and recording this vote for this person, it's actually this vote for that person, right?
Yeah.
They bring sealed results with their, of their test deck. And then we run them, give the results and see if they match.
But it's not a test, test of the software, is it? So the test, it's just a test that, it's a test of the optical alignment and the marks on the ballot with the machine.
It does both because the software has programming in it based off of the, the decks, based off of the ballots. You know, what, what is the size of the ballot, you know, don't want to go for two-page ballots and, and all that fun stuff. We are requesting two additional DS 950s, which is the new machines, to replace the old 450, which doesn't meet our needs anymore, it's just too slow and old of a machine. The 850, which is now end of life, it's not into support, so it still has some life in it, and we would like to use that 850 as a, as a backup and have two 950s. They, they run approximately 150,000 each. So it'd be 300,000 for both of those. We could get by with, with one and using the 850 as a backup. But like I said, that one is end of life, but it's not into support. So there's a couple options on that one.
And machines are mandated right now by statute. It's not like you can say, we're not gonna use machines or what is here? Let me be clear, it's that later machine that you're talking about. Yeah, so that's, because you know, a lot of people say, oh, you can just get rid of machines. And then I've heard people say, you can't.
So-
You know, I mean-
As our unfortunate colleague here experienced with the case that ended up in Puma County, the, the wonkiness of the ruling that 100% is not random, which I still laugh at every time I, I read that, that, that ruling, but if, 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 if we were to do this, and I, I'm open to the idea, we need to do it by testing in progression to get to 100% so that we, we don't have processes that make us look like idiots on national television if we don't have a system set out. So going cold turkey-
We can't.
Yeah, would be a disaster, in my opinion. We would look really bad.
Yeah.
It would also cost a lot of money. So what we need to talk about at a later date is maybe setting up a 25% sample hand count and validate the machines or vice versa, use the machines to validate the hand count or something along those lines, if you want to start going down that road. But we need a very detailed process if we're gonna do it. And we need to test that process before we go live on, on that process. So incrementally getting into it will probably be the way to go. And we, we, we will find problems inherently. That's why I'm saying, if you, if you started out doing 25%, you're gonna find problems. Now, whether you can fix that small little segment of problems without having a huge impact, but I think there's a way to do both too, where you can have a segregated machine count and a segregated hand count. And that would be interesting to see what the differences in those two would be, if any. And that would be interesting to see what the differences in those two would be, if any.
So I, I'll keep for that question to the legal side.
We can, uh, we can get a legal opinion to you, we can do some research and we'll get back to you.
Yeah, and again, I, I, just got a couple. Oh, yeah, I, I, I have a, I have a fundamental disagreement with that outcome by that judge, just, that's my personal thing, because I, I kind of giggle, having been a legislator. You know, the, the reason they go with random counts is because you don't count a hundred percent and they don't want somebody to gain the system with figuring out which precinct to stick anything in that you want to sneak something through it, and so you, you gain the system. So they say, okay, it's gotta be random, so that you don't do it. That's what the definition of that means. To say that a hundred percent, counting a hundred percent, which gives full accountability of a hundred percent, is not random, therefore you can't do a hundred percent count is just insane to me. And it's the logic of that rationale, I don't care if he's a judge or not.
It's illogical and.
It is completely illogical.
He used that, uh, and, and basically, so you could have random order.
Yeah.
Random order of all.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, and it's still random. In fact, i- i- in the same section, they're using, uh, having the, 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 uh, the, uh, party chairs draw straws. And that is random also, but you're not leaving out a party chair.
Yeah, yeah, here, here, here's also my philosophy. It's easier to go into court before the fact and fight a case than after the fact. So when, when we, and I've seen this pattern now for the past twenty years. Judges do not like to overturn the will of the voters. So they are not gonna do that. And, and if, so if you go in after the election and try to fight this when you're on a tight timeline, you're not gonna get anywhere. So the way you do it is before the election. So if we're gonna go do this, get this all built up, get it out there in the public, do public hearings and let somebody sue us so that we can go into court before the election and fight the battle beforehand. Because after, I think we're, we're fighting with two feet in the grave. Cuz the ju, there's no judge, it's gonna go, okay, we're, we're gonna change this or change that after this election already occurred. But, and, and that's happened. Every single election case that goes, they always, and I, and I, I can't mention the name, but I've spoken to a couple judges. They have literally, the words they use is, we are not gonna be the first guys in the country to go down this road and set this precedent, let some other state do it first. And that's, that's the, the, the most emotional mindset that these guys and gals uh, that are wearing black robes have. But if you come in beforehand and you could have the, the hearings and there's no change of the outcome of an election pending on those hearings, you're just fighting over the process and how you're gonna go do this with the machines or no machines, this way we're gonna count, that way we're gonna count. That's the fight where you have a better chance of winning because you're not changing the outcome or trying to change the outcome or affecting the reporting and recording of an election because you're on this tight timeline, Mr. Crosby.
Yeah, the other thing you want to avoid is any accusation of fraud because that's very difficult to prove. If, if you're just talking about the process, that's one thing. You're just talking about black letter law, that's one thing. If you're trying to prove that somebody had attempts to do wrongly, you gotta get inside their head.
That's impossible, yeah.
Okay, so the.
Go ahead.
So the other thing on, on the tabulation machine is, again, those new machines, but also building up three full teams to run the machines. Um, they have to be fully certified and getting them dedicated ahead of time. And then, you know, continue to, to maintain equipment regularly to make sure we have the vendor come out and do the, the maintenance on machines before the election. Uh, not less, or less than sixty days prior to the election or.
So, so the nearest person that actually can fix the machines is, you know, Oklahoma, like, it's, it's some of their.
Yeah.
So we call them, they arrive the same day.
Yeah, I, I, where are we right now? Are we on C? Cuz I want, Dan, I want to ask you on C, when the sixteen thousand eighty ballots, you, you tabulated them, right? Is that a point where you let the board supervisors know, hey, we've, we've had to do this re-tabulation or whatever? I mean, I think.
It'll be in the future.
Okay, yeah, because, um, I mean, I don't, I, we want to support you in all ways. That's what I, I feel as a board supervisor. And, um, so I want to know everything that's going wrong so that we can be the, you know, when everyone's saying, oh, 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 my gosh, you gotta fire him or, you know? Cuz there was a lot of people that were upset about, you just had the worst situation in so many ways, right? We don't want to let you out, hang you out to dry. We want to know everything that's going on so you can, we can support you because at the end of the day, it's gonna be us getting indicted or thrown in jail over the things that happen, right? Um, it won't be you guys, but, so that's why there has to be a total.
Oh, no, Marty might be on the hook too. He's on the hook, yeah.
Well, anyway, but, you know, we don't want anyone in that situation, so.
Of course not.
A total feeling that we're there and there for you, we're one team, we're not blaming anyone. We just want to make sure that the public understands that we're doing this, you know, totally transparent. You know, everyone's gonna know what's happening, there's no secrets, there's no, you know, bad ill intentions. So I think it's really imperative going forward, you guys know that we're here for you and we have, you know, you're here for us, and so we want to be transparent to the public.
Yeah, that was another lesson learned for myself on how much you can communicate with the board. Um, there's a new role for me to win that communication, so, but, well understood.
Well, the good news is the next one doesn't have us on the ballot. So, so we can do the dry run on, on, on that one with us all sitting back and taking an easy breath. Yes, Mr. Crosby?
Uh, Dylan, are you familiar with the so-called Purcell doctrine? Okay.
Yes.
Uh, would you mind coming up with some kind of timeline that says by, it's from, from paces that are based on it. The closer you get to an election, the, the more careful you have to be about changing any rules.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying, trying to, if we're gonna be doing different things, we need to, the further away from the election you get, the better your outcome is, the close.
The sooner, the better.
Yeah, the sooner the better. The closer you get to an election or after the election, the less likely you're gonna get a lot of sympathy from a court that, to, to do this stuff. It's just a fact, I mean, if you just look at the cases. But Joe, back, uh, back to this, the personnel stuff, when we talked before, you've got county employees in other positions that you pull in to support on, on election day. Do they have to have any kind of training, special certific, certified?
Depends on what role it is.
Okay, I agree, you've got guys driving delivery vehicles. Do they have to have like a security clearance to touch ballots or?
No, they all take the oath.
Oh, take an oath, okay.
Oath of office and, you know, also the two-party rule, which I think we do in elections.
We, so do we do that? We pick, pick one Republican employee, one Democratic employee?
Or other party.
Really, really?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
Everything.
Yeah, everything's got a two, two-man rule.
To pick up ballots, to deliver ballots, to.
It doesn't have to be an R and a D. Just a. Secretarian and unparty.
Just two different parts.
Parties.
Okay, Mr. Crosby.
Uh, could you talk, tell us about UOCA signature verification? And what is the requirement to be a signature verifier for the recorder's office?
Well, that's two questions, but we, we go, we have annual training that we put our staff through on signature verification. Uh, they just put in statute last year, a guideline, used to just be a publication, now it's a statute. Without that training, they're not allowed to signature verify.
How many?
How many what?
How many signature verifiers can we have in the whole county?
In the whole county? Six.
Okay.
Seven, if you count me. Don't count me.
Okay.
And then the training's coming up in the, in the late spring, early fall to be a state-certified elections officer and/or signature verification. That's put on either by, well, the first one's put on by the state, Secretary of State, to be an election officer. And then the signature verification is put on by, given the SOS or one of the two or three counties. Usually Maricopa, Pimo will, will set it up.
Do we pay them, you know, to be on the day of work?
Sure.
We do, right? And we pay these, these.
What, pur, purifiers?
Purifiers?
No, no, it's, it's my normal staff.
They, they, well, they're paid, yeah, they're part of their duties.
When you're looking, you need outside personnel or more backup or whatever. They're, they're not just volunteers, they get paid, right?
Correct, okay.
And do you find, because I've heard people who are like, you know, it's so hard to find anyone, what do we pay them in?
Oh, you're talking about like poll.
Yeah, okay, so for the day, uh.
Yeah.
Watching it all, okay.
Really, I was talking, what I was talking about was the guys and gals we use from the county to, to help Marty and, and run the elections piece.
There are many employees.
They're county employees that are provided, I don't know, we give them a little extra time and a half?
No.
Or, or is it, is it flex time in exchange for it? I mean, cuz they're there till like two in the morning.
There's some employees that will take PTO, will take time off and then get paid the stipend that elections pays, which is.
So for troubleshooters, it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day.
So they'll take a vacation and then they'll volunteer for elections and, and do that piece. Um, but if, if they don't take PTO, then they just get paid their, their normal salary as an employee.
Oh, no, if they're salary, they just get their salary.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
Do you have any problems getting people?
For this last one?
Yeah, um, so I, I think we struggled a little bit with the early board because we had a full early board and for whatever reason, there's various reasons that some of them couldn't come back. So we got in a little crunch with the early board.
Mr. Crosby, I was gonna say, whether they're part-time or full-time or hired from outside, I believe that I can speak for my colleagues, we will prioritize for the elections, accuracy and voter confidence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's a no-brainer.
No, we're not trying to be cheap.
Yeah. Yep, I, I was, that's what I was bringing up, we pay them extra, give them a bonus to, to come in and work till two o'clock in the morning helping Marty count ballots.
Including volunteers.
You know, I mean, there's, there's. But they, I, I want to make sure they get the training or whatever certification or whatever, you know, oath of office they have to have and.
Yeah, so for poll workers, all poll workers have to come through a training.
Right.
This year, we, or this last one, we increased the training, uh, from half a day to a full day for those that were inspectors and judges.
You get, you get a day's pay for that.
They get.
That's the one twenty-five?
No, in addition to the, it depends on what position you are. So if you are an inspector, you get paid more.
About?
I, I believe it's a hundred and fifty.
To, to attend training?
No, to attend training, it depends on where you live. So it's depending on the mileage. So if you're coming in from Saravista, maybe thirty-five dollars. If you come in for the day.
For a day?
Yes.
That's not a big thing. And then from Douglas, that might be.
It's probably the same, about thirty-five or twenty-five maybe.
So you're getting people who are retired and probably older and they're not, cuz I'm one of those. But elements come up, you know, or you just don't feel good that day. And, and so I don't know how you recruit a younger population, but thirty-five dollars is not even paid for really the gas?
That's what it is paid for, paying for your gas. Actually, I'll, it's very brutal that.
We did not, we, we give them that.
Yeah, that's something.
No day only, no. The, the problem we got and we have is, this stuff happens during the week. So when you get someone that's got a normal job, they gotta take time to do that, it's just not gonna happen.
But I know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we, if we have county employees for, I don't know, example, like, uh, one of the finance department persons that, that we could pull for that day. You know, that knows how to count. You know, somebody that's got Excel experience or accounting experience, whatever, I'm just saying. And then for that day, that day, they're not doing their finance job. You know, the other three people in the office have to pick up the slack. For that day, he or she is sitting in the elections department, you know, doing election stuff or, or signature reviewers, maybe we pull somebody out of, uh, you, you know, the IT department that knows that, and then for that day, they're doing IT stuff. But I mean, that's, I'm just saying, temporary, pull people out of a position that are paid positions, that are getting paid good money, that, that can, for that day or how many days?
So, so just to raise your awareness a little bit, we do have a policy in our human resources policies for election and poll workers of county employees to allow them to do that, um, at the presidential preference election. We had the majority of our poll workers and inspectors, um, and early board probably even were county employees. Um, because we didn't have enough from the public for those, for that particular election. And then, um, for the primary and the general, we did have more from the public come in, so we didn't have to draw from uh, county employees as much. But we do do that when elections communicates to us that there's a problem. Now, it is, like you said, different color salary.
You, you tell me, you have county employee backup.
Right, a lot of the directors.
Yeah.
A lot of the directors already serve as couriers for the night, um, and so.
Mr. Cox was driving a van.
Yeah, yeah, we.
Well, it's good.
Work entry, and then find out there's gaps, and we fill them in with county employees.
Okay.
But I do think you need to, to figure, thirty-five dollars a day to get people from the public, but that, that's, I mean.
We've got enough to take a look into that.
Yeah, so the, the other thing that I've gotten a lot of emails on is trying to push back towards increasing voting. Right, so we've, over the past couple of years, consolidated into these voting centers.
All the stuff they're going to pay for me.
Right, so, so a long time ago, we, we had, you know, schools, churches, fire stations, all these other public buildings that we pay. Some of them we pay rent for the day, to rent their building for the day, and we still do, right? We still pay some churches and some.
There's two facilities we pay for.
Yeah, yeah, right, and then.
A lot of places.
Do libraries in the corner and whatever. So, you know, that's kind of been, the cost, there's people associated with that. But if, if we want to go to this hand-counting system, it's obviously easier to set a process up at the precinct level where you're counting a hundred and eighty to two hundred ballots versus twenty-five hundred ballots or five thousand ballots in a voting center. So there's a cost associated with that, back to what Mr. Crosby was saying is, you know, if you want to get the confidence and you want to go to eventually a hand-count model, it's probably easier to go to, back to the precinct voting model.
Well, I remember.
And that helps with, what I know Warren Peterson and those guys are trying to do up there is to go back to that model as well.
That we want, just having one voting center done, this was just three, it was three out of eight. I mean, it was just ridiculous.
It's just two and a half average or some places.
So, so, you know, like.
And that was the general?
Yeah, but twenty twenty-four was an anomaly.
Yeah, yeah.
Thirteen initiatives.
But you remember when we ran the legislature and what was her name, the county recorder, Maricopa County, got almost fired over? They were gonna lynch her because the voting lines were like.
Yeah, but what happened, that was the PPE in twenty sixteen.
Right.
And one party was telling people.
No, Helen Purcell.
It was Helen Purcell, but they, they were telling people, go vote.
Yeah.
But if you're, if you were Republican or Democrat, it wasn't gonna count, and they, and they got flooded by the non-party people.
Right.
Cuz the, the word was out there, go vote anyway, and they were going till midnight.
Right.
Correct.
But that's what I'm getting at, so she had just made the decision to consolidate precincts, and that's what bit her in the rear end, was that, was that decision. And again, back to what we're saying is that we need to go back out to that precinct. So now you're, you're, you're focusing fewer voters on more places to vote.
Hopefully, or highly, more, more, uh, volunteers slash.
Well, that, that, well, that, that, well, that, well, that's what I'm saying. Then, then the cost factor comes in, and you gotta pay people to have all those polling places, or we gotta rent those polling places.
You gotta find ADA accommodation.
Yeah, ADA, you gotta drive there now with the pickup vehicles to pick all the stuff.
A lot more equipment.
Yeah, but, but what we're getting at is.
Big cities maybe.
There, there's a price you're gonna pay for confidence, right? So we, 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 we've had, over the last couple of election cycles, a degrading in voter confidence, right? So if you're gonna try to bring voter confidence back, how do you bring voter confidence back? That's what we're trying to get at. So we're, this brainstorming one-on-one here, but what we've had is, we used to have a system that, when I remember when I was eighteen years old, we went into the machines that had the little stickers on it where you go in and flip the little, flip the little levers and it, and it would put the little, yeah, you pull down the big thing and it would stick all the stickers on the, on the back of the, you remember those days?
At crayons.
Oh, you had crayons. But I mean, every, everybody had, and I used to go to a fire station and vote when I was a kid, so younger. You know, but that, that system there worked for decades. Well, maybe it didn't, maybe unless you're in Chicago, I, there's a lot of dead cats that voted in Chicago. But I mean, but there, there's, there's, but the voters had confidence, that's what I'm saying. There's, even if it may have been not that way in Chicago. I, I just want, everybody I talked to says they want to get back to that mindset where they feel comfortable that there's very little chance, and because you, you have a disparate system of each individual precinct, gaming the system is harder when you, when you have individual precincts versus everything, or dropping off thousands of ballots at three o'clock in the morning.
The, the presidential election in twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-four averaged roughly twelve thousand votes on election day. So you still have the issue of mail-in ballots. So your, your window is small, cuz you're talking twelve thousand, roughly twelve thousand votes cast on election day at either a vote center or a precinct. So just keep that in mind.
Well, that may change though, because now with this, if, if they're successful.
Could, I'm just, this is.
In getting the Friday by seven PM through, where you have to have your ballot returned by Friday, cuz then if people forget, and they have done that, they're all showing up on election day.
Well, and we were averaging three to five thousand ballots dropped off on election day. So it's a.
Oh, there's more than five thousand ballots dropped off on election.
They were, uh, if they were, uh, not mailed by that Friday, they would end up voting instead of dropping the ballot.
Right, 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 that's what I'm saying.
Now you're talking close to eighteen to twenty thousand.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at.
And back when we voted here, precinct, we had sixteen, I think there was sixty-nine precincts, we're fifty-five now. We were at forty-nine cuz they may have already, and then after the redistricting, we had to add six more precincts. But, uh, so the number of precincts are smaller than it were fourteen years ago. But, uh, so the number of precincts are smaller than it were fourteen years ago. So that that's a factor you got to learn too, is actually.
I mean, you could still put two precincts in the same polling place, but keep the precinct separate where this table this precinct and this table is this precinct, but you still so you still have separate precincts.
Yeah, I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
When we were still a precinct model, we had more precincts. And now we have less precincts. It doesn't mean you can't, I'm not, and I'm not suggesting this make less precincts, go down to thirty five precincts, make it larger.
No, that's.
We do that because that's your purview. But that does reduce the amount of staff you need. Uh, but you're looking at twenty percent of the of the vote coming on election day right now. It's not the hundred percent.
And isn't there a bill in the legislature that would limit the precinct size to a hundred people or something?
Uh, no, a thousand, a thousand registered voters.
In a precinct, the limit of the size.
And that would put us up to over eighty in this county if that actually went through. I personally don't think it's going to go through, but you never know.
But that that again, what the legislature is doing though is driving back to precinct model.
Yeah, trying to.
Right, which I kind of agree with.
But that that doesn't affect the mail-in voting. That's still another issue.
Yeah, that that ship sailed. We've already had that discussion, trying to un un court that genie is not going to.
I'm just talking about what they're doing up there.
Yeah.
They're trying to fix this issue, which is twenty percent.
Yeah.
The eighty percent is still voting by mail.
That's a whole nother discussion.
Correct.
But I'm just getting, I'm just getting at this. If we were to come up with a system, you know, that a hand count, let's just say, right, a hand count system, you'd have to have a separate system for counting all the hand counted ballots that are mailed in. And then on election day, you have to have a hand count system in each precinct to allow for hand counting to hurry up and get the votes tabbed. It's like the the French model, right? Everybody talks about the French. The French count their ballots at the precinct. They have the poll workers, they close the polls, everybody goes off to the side, they set the ballots up in a system and they go through a hand counting and they validate with a second set of people doing it. They have two groups of people count their ballots. And then they write the numbers down and they send the numbers in. They, that's how they, and they're doing it one day. They're doing it one day, right? So but they don't ship all the ballots and then have a room full of five thousand ballots and have five people counting it. That's bad. That's where you get bit in the rear end, right? So in order to do the hand count system, and you have Republican and Democrat at those places, those polling places, you have those witnesses there, they count the ballots there, they tabulate them there, seal them in a box, send the numbers plus the ballots here, and that's how they do it. That's if you're going to go to a hand count model, that's the way you do hand count.
Yeah, you have to leave with the badges of one to two.
Right, right, right. And that way there, they're protected in the badges. So if you do recounts, if you do anything, they're already, they're already protected. So that's why the legislature is pushing for a precinct model, and I'm kind of pushing for a precinct model. I don't want to speak for my two colleagues here.
But we we have been in the last few elections, over thirty races per ballot. So just keep that in mind.
Yeah, I I I got you. That's why, that's why.
We do. We only count five presidents.
That that's why we pick five precincts and we do a dry run on some election and we test the system and see what happens. You know, you still run the machines, but you also do a hand count in a couple precincts to just test it before you go live. But then maybe by the twenty twenty eight election, we're ready to go. We got the system, we knock out the worst by twenty twenty eight, then we could we could look at doing a full.
And I am surprised how many Democrats came to me and said, I'd rather go back to the old system. I mean, it's not just a Republican thing, but I I mean, I was amazed how many Democrats were upset in my district with how things proceeded, especially in Douglas. So I I don't see this, you know, I see this, both sides are not, it it isn't going well, especially it doesn't seem to improve every time there's an election, and this is the best way to go.
Yeah, I think helping getting the ballots in by seven o'clock on Friday is going to be a huge, huge thing. Because that way there, he can get the signatures processed by Tuesday and over to election. So Tuesday, you know, Marty and her team's ready to start counting.
Can we do that even if it doesn't pass?
No.
I mean, they don't care about.
What's the one about Florida?
Yeah, get thrown to jail. You're you're trying to, you're doing your best to stay out of it, and here you are, you're coming up with ideas to get yourself in it.
So. So one of the other challenges we ran into was the on the early board. So the early board, uh, group ended up, you know, the early board ended up being kind of the choke point through the process. Um, a lot of the the news that went out made it seem like the machine was the choke point, but it was actually the human element of of getting the the envelopes open, making sure the ballots don't have any errors, you know, stray marks, errors, stuff like that. Um, ended up being the bottleneck when it's said and done. In order to correct that, we want to increase the number of of early board members we have, increase that number of team. In addition, have county staff as backups. Build a team of several teams of early board members out of county staff that if we get to that point, we could then put them in there and start helping out. Uh, and that's something that has to be done, I believe, fifty days, twenty days prior to the election, they have to be appointed, twenty days prior.
Who points?
Their board.
We do.
Okay.
And that includes the backups.
Correct.
So when they come, when you verify them, they say, yeah. I guess I'm trying to figure out the flow from your office, from the recorder's office to the elections office. As soon as you verify them, do you just send them out right away, or do you?
No, our policy is we wait for the election victory, let us know when they read them. So we can, we can hold them. We can have eight hundred in there, we have eight thousand. So when they're ready to go, it gives me a thumbs up. Now, what if you don't want is, hey, I'm sending over two thousand ballots, uh, and and the early board works for an hour and goes home. When they come in, you want them to work most of the day kind of thing. So, uh, and they 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 have days, Mondays are heat days for us, Tuesdays are minimal days. I had a day this last.
Yeah, because of mail.
We got a hundred and thirty.
Weekend mail goes, yeah, it's all based on when the mail.
We get three thousand in on a Monday. So the those days kind of vary, but I I could force it on Marty, but there's no need to. So when she's ready for it, she lets me know and they come and get them.
We we did pick up on a daily.
And that's fine.
So you I'm looking at the numbers here that we got. So basically thirty four thousand mail-in ballots you process, signature process.
For twenty four?
Yeah. So the early board processed thirty four thousand ninety nine ballots. Those are all, you you know, you.
Early board is in our.
Yeah, but you do those signature for them.
Yeah, we verify before the early board gets.
Right, that's right. So you got enough people in your office to do that many?
And a bottleneck too.
We we have. It it again, it depends on what comes in on the day because the legislature changed our process. So we have to scan them now twice, but we usually only scan them once. So when they come in, we have to scan them because that identifies to the the website uh, and and the notification software that we've received your ballot. So we have to do that right away, and then we have to do it again when we have signature verified. So we're touching them twice as many times we used to.
But again, back to the question was bodies to do that? You got the bodies to do that now?
As of now, yes. Uh, do we have use more? Sure. Uh, I I tried to expand early voting and that that puts a strain on the the office, because they've only got a few people there. We're looking to hire two more. One for recording side, one for voter registration, but everybody pitches in on the election site.
Yeah.
They all do their own, because we have to remove them out of the the mail-in envelope. And then we have to scan them in the first time, and we got to scan them when we verify them. We're also doing in-person voting at the office, answering phone calls, basic, uh, office duties.
Mr. Crosby. Uh, I would like to talk about the language having to do with, uh, canvas versus certifying the canvas, which are not the same thing. It's very important. I I agree. Okay, so I'm going to talk, I'm just going to read this. This is, this is, was the, uh, uh, agenda item, and this says November twentieth, and it says, accept the election results certified and submitted by the Cochise County Elections Department as the official canvas for the general election held November fifth, twenty twenty four. Uh, rhetorically, who is certifying? Accept the election results certified by Cochise County Elections Department. Okay, so that says the Elections Department is certifying, okay? And I believe that I.
But that's the agenda item that says.
Yes, but nonetheless, I got the ARS section here too that I want to read. And so I'd appreciate you looking to see what what does, is this from the EPO? This language is from the EPM taking certification away from the Board of Supervisors? This is what the ARS has said. It says, uh, eleven two fifty one, paragraph three, establish, abolish, and change election precincts, appoint inspectors and judges of elections, canvass election returns, declare the results, and issue certificates thereof. Okay. Here is the board that is issuing certificates. It is not, it is not the Elections Department saying, uh, this is certified by the Cochise Elections Department and the Board of Supervisors is merely accepting. Right? We're supposed to certify it, okay? And then it gets transmitted to the to the Secretary of State. And I think it 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 follows logically that we will not transmit anything that is not accepted or certified. We just wouldn't do that logically. It 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 because otherwise they're saying, okay, in in it, in order for you to comply with this requirement to canvas, which says canvas election returns, what we're going to send them, what we disagree with? Here's this, here's this canvassed election, but we don't agree with it. Okay, would we do that? No, we would not do that. We would only transmit something we accepted and certified. So if you'd care to look, uh, where where does this language come from? And this was the, uh, November twentieth. Oh, I can just give this to him.
I can definitely look it up.
Okay.
I'll definitely look it up. I'll make sure that the agenda language conforms to to statute for sure.
There you go, because I think that the plan is to remove the Board of Supervisors. That's my impression. They want to remove the Board of Supervisors and say, this is, uh, mandatory, you have to vote yes. That's what my case is all about, and that's what this Warren Peterson versus Fontes uh, count five is all about, when you get a chance to look at that. And so we don't, in my opinion, we don't want to get to a point where where, oh, just trust the science, the machines say this.
Yeah.
Just go for it, okay? And and you're taking, you're taking the Board of Supervisors, which is supposed to be the checks and balances, and taking them out of the way and like, you know, well, you just just go. Right?
Yeah.
Just go. Okay, so what's what's wrong with that? That's that's a judicial supremacy outlook, in my opinion, instead of a balance of power outlook and a checks and balances outlook, which is what we're supposed to have. This is American. I mean, we're also having the same fight now over the the water stuff, right? So they're trying to take authority away from the Board of Supervisors in that regard too. So it's not an uncommon occurrence. Um, all right, so Joe, where are we at? Recommendations for improvements?
Yes. So, yeah, on the recommendations improvements, sorry, I had to consolidate everything into my my guy here. I'll have a following.
Oh, well, that's all right.
Yeah, yeah. So so then, uh, the other part is making sure we're implementing early recruitment for those early board members and getting that going now. Um, so we're going to increase those numbers and then start that recruitment now for those those positions. And then, uh, get certified for electronic adjudication for voter intent. And so that's going to speed up the early board process as well, because right now the tabulator will take the machines and actually captures an image of every single, uh, book, uh, card that goes through there. And it can put up on the machine saying, here's, here's a potential voter intent issue, you know, whether it's a stray mark or was the the voter actually intending this? And it allows a certified election official to to go in and say, yes, that was the voter's.
There have to be two, two people.
Opposite parties.
Opposite parties, okay.
Correct. And so we want to get get that, uh, approved this year, which will speed up the process as well. Um, because right now what happens is the early board, if they see a stray mark that, you know, okay, your voter intent is clear on here, but we have to, they have to duplicate the ballot, which then adds up.
The person that does this.
Right.
Exactly.
They might not catch them, and then then we go to tabulate, it kicks it out.
Right.
We have to stop tabulation to go get it duplicated, and and that's very time consuming as well.
Okay. Um, uh, the next thing we want to look at is the space optimization of the Elections Department over there. Uh, not just just changing the way it's laid out.
Oh, oh.
So so there's several things that we want to do over there.
Knock down some walls.
Knock down some walls, add up some doors, um, open up, make the ballot cage larger. Because one of the challenges right now is we have the ballots that we have to process, they go into this one ballot cage. We want to make it larger so we can say, okay, this is ballots that's received from the recorder. This is an area for ballots that are ready to be, you know, go to the early.
All in one cage and not three separate cages.
They're all in one cage, but it's a small cage, so.
Big letter above each pile with is what?
Is what we'd want to do, yeah. Instead of having to pull out boxes and boxes of ballots to get to the new ones and then push all those back in, it's just not very efficient, so we want to make make some changes.
What are you thinking about the building right over here, though? Is there enough room back there?
There there is if we re-alike, re-align it.
All right. I mean, I'm in that building.
Direct observation.
And then, yeah, and also, um, up front right now where the LNA test was done, um, we want to shift the ballot room or the the tabulation room up there with glass walls so that observers can actually see what's going on rather than through the the cameras. Cameras will still be there, that's still available, but then they can have direct observation.
And and it's wild because to deal with, kind of when you were watching it, you know, I mean, it's tight, it's tight, yeah.
There's there's two other shifts we want to do in conjunction with the Treasury Office to to close off that hallway that right now the treasurer has to walk through that hallway to use the bathroom or or break room. Um, and so we want to be able to close that off, so then the Elections Department will be fully enclosed and will allow us to be a lot more efficient in there. And so we're we working with facilities they're going to walk through, they're doing up some diagrams right now and trying to get some cost estimates, and then we'll come forward to the board with that when we have those details.
So just, I think, uh, somebody, I don't know, Little Bernie told me that there's a bill in the legislature also to uh, put the Elections Director under the County Recorder, just so everybody's aware. Is that true?
There is a bill going through that. It's not just that, it's it's other board duties.
Yeah.
Uh, like.
Again, taking stuff.
Early board stuff would all be approved by the board.
Yeah, so just so, we'll talk about that too. I'll add that to the list of stuff. So, you know. Anyway. All right, so.
Another thing that came up was, you know, just emergency preparedness, comments out there, you know, about a coup.
Oh, the bomb thing.
Yeah, exactly, contingency operations. So, you know, we do have have a coup plan, we do have contingency plans, um, but we'll continue to review those, you know, have some detailed.
After after we get the new jail bill, we could just move her into the jail and then have metal detectors and everything, so we know there's no way there'd be a bomb threat in there. Just have have the super secure facility, the ballots are protected.
That that could be an option.
And then have metal detectors and searches, everybody sniff dogs, say now, so if somebody calls a bomb threat in, we go, ah, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And Marty looks good in black and white, right?
No, 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 no bomb threats, yeah, sorry, we don't.
Or just in a black.
But, uh, so so Joe, are you gonna, are you gonna write up a new Marty, are you gonna write up a sort of like a a list of items to, like, we've got to approve the new machines.
Machines.
We got to prove, uh, the co- the contract for construction and renovation, we got to do new training. Right? You got to, you know, are you, you got that laundry list? Oh, is that, is that already?
Yeah.
We're going to just set that on a.
So they'll be agenda items each step of the way for whether.
Sooner though, rather than later, right?
Budget amendments to our inter-fund transfers from contingency for these elections expenses, because they would have to come out of contingency fund.
We got a contingency right now? Okay.
So those things would come before the board for approval.
All right. Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, so the machine. The machines would be quicker. We're we're be ready to get out in front of the board fairly soon.
Okay.
The remodel would take a little bit longer because we have to get gather those details.
What about the Prop one, two, three stuff?
The earliest it could happen now is November. Is that the sixty percent?
No, that that is the.
Taking the state trust land to fund.
The Red for Ed fix that Ducey did to.
It was on a ten-year cycle and it's ending really quick.
Yeah, it's coming to an end. I know they're trying to push to get it on the ballot. They were shooting for May, right?
Yeah, they lost May.
Yeah, now they're shooting for August.
Lose in August. If they haven't already lost it already, they lost August.
And then that'll make it November. So but it was, that will be an off-cycle November special election.
Statewide.
Statewide. So we could test some stuff. Be like a test, test.
It'd literally only be one question.
Even easier. To do some testing. Testing, testing, testing. It's only one question, so it's just a real quick.
Yes, no.
Yes, no. Something to think about, putting that bug out there.
They could probably throw another question on there, the legislature could, but.
We could too, though.
You could, but it won't be a thirty-question ballot.
No, it'd be, if we want, though, that's an opportunity for doing elections here too, if we're going to go to.
And you might have jurisdictional ones that we typically have.
Like school districts or cities.
Anybody? Um, not yet.
That's a good sign.
What is it?
Nobody, nobody's contacted or about wanting one for the November.
When is your deadline for?
The the deadline is today, but for the August election.
Oh, today was the deadline for August?
Yes.
Oh, then you're right, they lost August.
I'd have to go back.
I'd have to go back and look at what the date is for.
No, that was sometime in June, early, early June for November election.
That gets a limited time for us to come up with crazy ideas for the ballot November too.
Changing the county logo.
No.
So, so the, the last item we wanna talk about was reducing the wait time at the, you know, the vote centers, you know? Part of that is taking a look and seeing where we have our vote centers at, some of the more remote locations could potentially consolidate. A couple of the more remote locations and move one of those to, you know, Douglas, Sierra Vista, or some of those places that have those wait, wait times. Or stand up additional vote centers, purchase additional equipment and, and build new or get new staff.
A lot of people, you know, it's tough for them to get the gas to go all the way into Douglas. But definitely, I mean, Douglas is your second largest city, Cochise County, correct? And they only had one voting center and the other question, you know, some people were saying, well, you, you were open two weekends in the month.
Two Saturdays.
Two Saturdays. Does it, you think how, you open at four?
You have your chair, I'll be right back.
Okay. Uh, I wanted you a whole month.
Well, like from Monday to Saturday?
As long, because my office is open for the entire month, really. I wanted that in Sierra Vista. Problem I had, and we talked about this briefly, was getting people that can work July and October for the whole month. And they gotta show up, they need multiple parties. Uh, if one party didn't show up, I can't, I can't do, that's why my staff worked Saturdays there. Now, the last Saturday we had, we had almost five hundred people vote in one day, which is equivalent to most vote centers. So it, it's, it's turned out to be very popular, but I, I had the same problem. July wasn't quite so bad because they had college kids that could have done it, but October is horrible. Uh, just nobody could do it and you, you're talking the whole month, right? And you can't really pull them out of their jobs here.
Right.
Unless you, say you pick five people, goes, on Monday you go here, Tuesday you work there, that, that causes a lot of logistical issues. Uh, that was a goal going forward, is try to open up more early voting out of the county. That way they had more time to go vote. And it kinda satisfied some of the people that don't want mail-in voting, so now you have a whole month because now they have drug business. And you live in Wilcox or Benson, it's just not, or even Sierra Vista, it's not gonna happen much.
But that, that was, that was a good, good.
Yeah, and that was, and that was a more of a proof of concept.
Yeah.
Uh, and it worked out real well. The first Saturday in the primary, we did fifty people. Now we're up to five hundred. So the, the word got out, they said, it's a, uh, good location, the county owns the building. Uh, wherever such stuff up there, we need, on that Saturday, we could use a couple of machines. They were lined up before seven to five before they opened and they opened at six to five in the night, they were lined to vote. Um, so it's, whoever you guys pick next week, I, I talked to them about it.
Week after.
The week after.
One more, uh, issue for Dylan while you're here. Uh, page three, top of page three says, discovered that the number of early votes handpicked should have been four twenty-five instead of two hundred. And after that happened, that got the okay by the county attorney and the state secretary, the Secretary of State. But neither one of them is a judge, so they didn't really go to the court. So what about that?
I will research that and I'll get back to you.
Thank you so much.
So, so when you're talking about the future, I think definitely, we had, but the, so there was no early voting in Douglas at all.
Correct.
Correct? And, um, I don't know if a Saturday would have helped, but a lot of people were upset with having this one. Since it is the second largest city and, um.
There was never one in Sierra Vista though too, right?
It was on a chip on both centers.
Both.
There were four in Sierra Vista and one being a mega center.
Oh, you're not talking about Saturday?
No, she's talking about normal days, but.
Yeah, so on that day of election.
Oh, oh, on election day.
It would be great if we could figure out the way we stuck this one day in the month of our two eighteen to vote.
That is an option to, to, of course, I don't have enough staff for that, but Saturdays work out better for people that work Monday through Friday.
Right.
And then have early voting and I know Heather's gonna kill me if I say this.
So you handled the early voting?
My staff handled it, yes.
And then would you collect the ballots and treat them as mail-in ballots and then deliver them? Okay, good.
Yeah, so, and they, they were separated from people who just dropped one off.
Right, 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 because you verify the.
They, they checked in.
Right.
Uh, but having, having two Saturdays.
See, that's better.
Not just Sierra Vista, but Douglas, maybe Wilcox or Benson.
Okay.
Uh. That's an option where I can look into it. Twenty-two days. I know Marty's thinking, oh my God, they shut up.
But you know, I had.
Because they have to code the machines.
Right. But I had a lot of people, that's what she said, I, you know, I, I, and making, they were a few reasonable people. Were saying, you know, I want a job, but nobody called me back and, you know, I've got about ten names of people that I, I would have done it and I would have, you know, I, I wanna help out, you know? And I guess the thing is, is understanding the process of which you have the criteria, criteria for people to be qualified to vote, and maybe they have to do the training, right? And maybe it's getting out the word early to do that. I mean, I know I definitely did that in Douglas. Um, if you wanna participate, because there was like, yeah, they never called me back, oh, they never called, I had to call back and several times so that maybe I could help in that process of getting out there. Through the outsides or through the Douglas Rotary Club or stuff like that.
Yeah.
It'd be kind of free.
Now, the training that we have isn't required to do the onsite voting.
Okay.
Because you don't do signature verification to check them in.
Okay.
Uh, and they're not state certified.
So you don't have to worry about it?
So we don't have to worry about that, but.
It's a skinny.
There's gotta be a trust issue with people doing it. Now, if, if we pick on county employees. They, and maybe give them a Saturday to work, that could be very.
Or, or, and what about looking at just like, like, I know about five people who would have done it, they, they aren't with the county. But what do we pay them for their days work to be, somebody signs them, you know, like we had an early day, early voting.
On a Saturday.
On a Saturday. Did we pay anything?
It was my staff, so they, they.
Okay, but.
They were salaried.
No, they were hourly, so they were.
Hourly.
B P O.
So what about people who don't work for the staff? Do we, do we give them? Like pay them to do it?
So in the case of like our early board, they do get hired through the county as a temp worker and they get minimum wage, which is, uh, it, it's changed.
Change.
Seventeen seventy.
Yeah.
I believe.
We couldn't just say for a hundred bucks, you're gonna get a hundred bucks and some snacks.
A meal or sandwich.
I mean, plus if you, if you.
Like a hundred and twenty.
You know. Yeah, I mean, that, that.
Before taxes. For one day.
That would seem like that would be, you know, and then you're appreciating their time that they're taking and then they go, you know, there are a lot of them really wanna be part of the process, so that might be an option.
You could give them a waiver with property taxes, ten percent off or something.
All right. So, but, but you get the, you're gonna get that list together of all the stuff plus the expenses and we'll get it on the agenda?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, I just wanna clear up one thing, you mentioned the thirty, no, the thirty-four thousand, that's what was processed before Election Day. We did forty-six thousand early ballots.
Okay, okay, that was the early board.
No, the, the thirty-four thousand was Marty had before Election Day. We, we ended up doing forty-six thousand.
Oh, really?
Out of the sixty-two thou, was it sixty-three thousand? How many did you get total, countywide turnout?
For, it was fifty-nine thousand and change overall voting.
Overall, and then would you have been?
We did forty-six, forty-six thousand early ballots. Thirty-five hundred and change were dropped off on Election Day. But that was, and, and we can't do our job until the ballots come in. So we're, we're, uh, kinda on hostage at that point. Uh, so if we get a bunch in the last couple of days, we're behind. And more staff would, would help that because at four thirty on Monday, we stopped process.
Yeah.
Because they have to upload the poll books with the, the latest information. We don't go back to that till, till Wednesday. Uh, so if I had more staff, uh, then we could have hit more of that before Election Day. But that, we had plenty in the office waiting to be processed. But, uh, when, when you said thirty-four thousand, it didn't ring well, but I was looking.
Well, I was looking at the sheet that Joe had, that was the number.
That's, that's what elections had.
Early, er, early, yeah, early board elections received thirty-four thousand ninety-nine early ballots prior to Election Day. Prior to.
The fact that, yeah, I was against Stevens, they were counting, it's not, I mean, do you think in the future, just with the process we have, would it still take ten days before you find out who the? The winners are? Do you think that you could have done it in three days? Is there any way it could be ever, like, the next day you can find out?
Well, no, because there's always the signature cure. So anybody that has to come in with a signature cure, that's five days. So you'll never have the final, final results.
So the best would be five days. That's if everything went well.
In statute, we have to give them five calendar days now, it'd be five business days. So we're required to be open on Saturday and Sunday after the election, for curing. Now, you're only talking a few hundred ballots, so unless you have a race that's really close, you can make it.
But you're, you're only curing the mail-in ballots. You're not curing the ballots that were cast on Election Day.
No, no, no.
But, but you do get provisional ballots too.
Oh, the provisionals cast on Election Day have to be cured.
Yeah, and we don't see those till Wednesday.
And sometimes that could be a lot of them.
Well, they still get the five days. On, on a federal election, say the May twenty-three election, it's three days. Because it's jurisdictional, but that's require more time.
Or this coming November would be three, three days, this is not federal. Okay.
So, but again, we're talking, I think we were around five hundred.
Yeah, most of those are not gonna.
And I don't think any races were that close.
No, if you, if you, if you're not within like forty votes, you're probably fine.
Yeah. But we did have elections a couple of years ago that were won or lost by less than fifty votes.
I remember, uh, what was the L D North?
B S, it was that way.
What was it?
B O S, the primary.
Mine?
Yeah, before you ran, the one before you, before you.
Oh, the cycle, oh, oh.
He was won by like forty-seven votes.
Oh, that was the, yeah, yeah, Heather Floyd, yeah. How, and then, uh, the, the Trent, uh, Trent and what was that lady up in, uh, was it L D twenty-six back then? Where she, she won by like six votes?
Oh, uh, Al Melvin's district?
Yeah, it was, the other house race up there was like six votes in that district, yeah.
I mean, that could happen, that could happen in twenty-four.
No, I know, I know, I know. We've had some really close ones in the state, so, I mean, crazy stuff happens, so like.
America, what you can see is pretty close.
Yeah. That's all I got. Uh, anybody else got any other discussion? Anything? Lots of work to do on elections, so we'll be doing another working session as well, so we'll call it a day. Our young, our young attorney will get off to researching Mr. Crosby's questions.